Start out with Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Marty.
Got the agenda ahead of us. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. Got a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We've got the minutes. We've got the minutes from last Monday's meeting and also the minutes from last Friday. Do we want to do that as a separate motion for each? Okay, we'll start out with the minutes from last Monday's board meeting.
I need your motion approved last Monday's board meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion in a second to approve the minutes from last Monday's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, then we'll go to the minutes of last Friday's meeting. And you've got some in your packet also. You have a motion to approve those.
So move.
Got a motion in a second to approve the minutes of last Friday's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Dave isn't here right now. Okay, we'll go down to the second item on the agenda is the C A D Housing Study Committee Appointments. And we visited a little bit about this last week with C A D, the new housing study that we're doing. They will want two appointments made from this board. And at this time, is there Gene and Neil? Are you guys up or serving on that committee?
I'd be glad, sure.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, got a motion to the effect to elect Neil and Gene to the Housing Study Committee?
Can I have a question?
Sure.
I had a question. I meant to bring that along with us. Aren't they, they're appointing two from the Board of Supervisors, two from
The city.
The city, two from the C A D C, and then two at large, or from the public? Or is there just six?
Two city, two county, two board members.
Two C A D C board members.
And this is just a suggestion. It says usually a small group, approximately seven. And they list two city, two county, and two board members. And I thought there were supposed to be two from the community, from the business community as well. And I think that is going to happen.
Well, I think probably even the ones from the C A D C would probably be a business, I'm sure.
Well, herein lies my question. If Gene serves, wouldn't the C A D C have three?
Well. Now, there's two sides of that. True, but if the C A D C member was also a businessman, they would have the business represented to, I guess, two maybe. You know what I'm saying?
And? I think we should have employers in on this if it's about employment.
I'm actually not an employer now, but I have a business I operate, of course.
You've got experience as an employer.
But I don't think they're counting me for that side. I don't know. Yeah, it's a point. It's a point.
I know that Gene recuses himself a lot from new opportunities. And, you know, that, what took place a couple of weeks ago could have had that same discussion, but it didn't happen. But I guess what I'm saying is, wouldn't the C A D C have three?
I see your point. Because yeah, he's absolutely a C A D C member, yeah.
But I'm also a county supervisor.
Yeah.
Wanted to report.
And so are us three. I, I'm certainly glad, you know, fine with Neil. I don't think it should be me, because then you'd have two no votes on that housing committee. So I would suggest one of these two. That'd be my suggestion. Otherwise, I have concerns that...
Because I don't think they plan on putting me on as far as the C A D C board. And I guess I would be, I'd feel I'd be representing the county. Which is what I do when I'm on that board anyway.
Yeah. I guess I look at it, you know, like I said on Region 12, the first question we ask is is there any conflict of interest? And if there is a conflict of interest, you state it.
Yeah, I rarely see a genuine conflict of interest when we're asked to serve on these boards.
Right.
I see it mostly as a liaison, or perhaps a sound piece, you know, to report back, more so than anything. I just, I just have some concerns that the C A D C, in its position, is getting a little too weighted towards governmental policy.
How do you address that concern, Gene?
Well, I don't, I, the interest. You know, when I sit on that C A D C board, I'm sitting on behalf of the county. And that's where I feel like I'm doing with this fair point this time. You know, I think we've got a difference of opinion up here on that topic. And I feel they're gonna probably put on two other members that are business people on there for C A D C myself. And I don't know that for sure. I'm just going by what they told us so far. And I'd like to see this, see it to the end myself. I don't think it's gonna be a big issue myself.
If, if...
Because there's gonna be a lot of input through these local meetings and everything. There's gonna be weighted in on that, and it's gonna be a lot of varied avenues to get all brought together. I don't see it being an issue.
I trust you like a brother.
Yeah.
I do. If you can assure me that you're gonna represent Carroll County on that board, and not the C A D C.
Well, I'll represent the county on it.
Then...
What I think is in the best interest of the county.
That's what I needed to hear.
Neil, does it have any in there, the description of what actually this board is going to do?
Briefly. They'll be asked to share their knowledge of the community based on their individual backgrounds. Encourage them to attend public meetings, but this is the only meeting they're personally asked to attend. It's actually gonna be Thursday afternoon. So I don't know what R D G requested there be a technical committee. And technically, it's two city, two county, and two board members. From visiting with Shannon last week, I believe there's also gonna be two people from the Business Committee, which I would venture would also be members of C A D C, which gives a lot of weight to...
It does.
You know? So, so I understand Mark's concern about the C A D C.
Gene, I don't question your integrity one bit. I'll always, and sometimes question your decision-making. It's like you'll question mine. But I hope you understand my concern over that. And recognize it.
And I can see where this is coming from, because C A D C is initiating this study. And if we were initiating a study, or anybody, you don't initiate a study and then give all the power to somebody else. Say, "We're doing the study, but you handle it." So I think they're gonna try to maintain a lot of clout in their arena.
And therein lies my concern.
And I think there's gonna be a lot in here where, you know, more input's gonna be put in through different meetings and stuff to, I don't think it's gonna be just...
Yeah, and that's their next thing. There's gonna be community meetings and stakeholder groups where they're gonna have in each of the communities and small group discussions, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm gonna go along with it. I just want the minute to reflect that there was some concern over that.
Okay. I look at it as basically kind of already heated, their feet to the fire, to kind of guide this thing along and make it prove out. Any other discussion?
Good discussion.
Thanks, Mark. If not, we've got a motion. We need a second.
I made the motion, correct?
Yeah, we need a second.
Was there a second made?
There wasn't a second made yet. I don't know.
Okay.
I'll make the second. Okay, got a motion in a second to appoint Gene and Neil to the Housing Study Committee. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll go up to the first item, Secondary Road Utility Permit. Dave?
Hi, David. Morning, everybody. Sorry for being late. Just talking to a box called a contractor. Said he's gonna come maybe third, fourth week in August. Doesn't get rained out where it's at.
Are we talking old thirty here?
Old thirty, yeah.
I'll maybe we gotta do just that one.
Do all three of them.
Three of them.
Oh, those three. Oh, okay, out there, yeah.
Actually, there's three bridges in one box, so it's really four. So, yeah, it's...
That's gonna take a while.
He says, he's thinking about a week for each one.
Per box?
He's gonna pump, instead of using a water run around. He's gonna pump from under here, so that'll be less intrusion on the road and other properties and less hassle with the, that few dollars for fuel and the pump.
Compared to putting in a bridge, one week is really fast.
Yeah, really is, yeah. So, keep our fingers crossed. All I've got's two utility permits, one from west central rural water, north on M sixty-eight, almost up to the Sack County line for a new home for, I think it's Dan Julins. They're gonna do a new home up there. It's just north of the Wieling Church corner.
Who's doing that?
Dan Julin, I believe.
Dan Julin?
J U L.
Oh, okay. I know where that's at. I just drove by that.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
No, that's right.
So about three-quarter mile line then?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a one oh nine oh five Concord, so yeah, it's...
They come from south.
I bet that's coming, I bet that's coming from the north.
That's where the tower's at, the more I think about it.
They're showing that line out there being a six-inch existing nave, and then they're just boring across.
Oh, they're just boring across?
They're just crossing, yeah.
Oh, okay, just across. I was taking, I was taking that exactly here.
Sorry.
All right. Sisting name? Sure. Right. There's the old church. Sure. Okay. Any other utility permits, Dave?
We've got one on two hundred and seventieth street, just off Highway seventy-one. Actually, that's a road that goes over to Myers Hill. R E C wants to take a line under the road, somewhere between a half mile and a quarter mile east of seventy-one to an insight. Looks like for an hour junior. You know, they haven't, they haven't situated it on the plan yet. Apparently it's right in this neck of the woods here someplace.
Yeah, he farms this all, brought down. He's probably put one in here someplace.
Yeah. I don't see it as an issue, but just drop it through it. So this, this one should be pretty straightforward.
So that's a crossing too.
That's just a low crossing. It's gonna be a whole lot. I'd make a motion to approve both of the utility permits.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second to approve the two utility permits? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I have anything else other than update maybe on the asphalt. Hopefully, as early as possible as wind this day. If it doesn't rain, they'll be done at Halber, so they'll be able to move the good rapids then. But it looks like it's gonna rain, so I'm gonna go there Thursday or Friday when they get down there at Halber.
I see they were blading that off, and they dug clear through the whole bottom layer south of Temple Corner.
Really?
Just not even to the top of the hill.
Just pulling out. High spores. Yeah, yeah. That blank thing works there most of the time.
Well, they just do that, take the bridge.
Yeah, yeah. Those little ridges reflect through, and they cut those off, almost like you would in Wood Lane.
And I'm sure it's covered now.
Yeah, I hope so.
Because I see those trucks coming through Temple this morning, so they're down by the temple.
A few old people, leak detector kicked the code out this morning, and there was a, there was a leak. Statistically, that's how it, how it does it. Remember, we've got a bad check valve on a pump, the tank, and the check valve's like a surge of fuel back into the tank. It's a statistical leak detection. The way they do it, it runs twenty-four seven. And so that little loop of fuel in there kind of looks like, well, something ran in there. So that's, it's pretty confident that's what it is. I've got my fingers crossed.
Getting it checked out then?
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's gonna come right away though, because it sounds like this kind of weather brings on some issues.
Dave, refresh my memory on the, who, where were you asked for them there from?
The old four-way stop, three miles south of the old four-way stop. I'm not sure what that is, just out of Coon. But then north, the north-south stretch where the old four-way stop is, it'd be three miles here. I mean, I guess two miles north of Coon.
North and south?
North and south, and then two miles east and west, and then one mile north and south, so six miles to it.
So you end up by Tom Sawyer's right in there?
Yeah.
East of Coon.
Yeah. East mile north.
Yeah. I just...
That was a stretch that we didn't do the other time, because it, it wasn't an earlier stretch as far as resurfacing yet last year or something. So they'll do that, and then they'll go to Ralston. And Ralston's got that mishmash of the Rice Project, the local project, the Park Market Project. Now, Brink County's added a stretch over there too.
And then Liddedale.
And then, yeah, whether we go to Roselle or... Liddedale? We're gonna do Liddedale?
You went south of Liddedale, huh?
No, it's lane. No.
So what else is there, Ralston after that?
We have to get down to Ralston, we've got Roselle, and we're like, we shouldn't be there.
Why does that think we was doing that from the north?
Because we talked about it a long time ago.
See, I'm getting stuck in here.
No, we did have that.
We talked about it.
We talked about it. We drove around, we talked about it, we looked at it. And just, and at the time, we didn't pull that in there, because we didn't have sufficient funding to do it on the Park Market.
So has the weather repeated? The asphalt?
Yes, it has.
It has significantly here?
Oh...
Two days last week.
Two days last week, yeah, yeah. And it'd be nice if they could go at the shoulders, but they try and run till mid-morning, a little later if it's gonna rain, to make their call whether to go. And then oftentimes, the rain had set in, it's too late to go at shoulders. By the time they move their load or at all down the pile, at least from where we're at now.
There's a lot of chances of rain in the forecast in the next seven days.
Sixty-one percent.
It seems like you don't even have to have a chance then where they pop up. Major ones.
I looked at that rain seventy the other day.
Yeah, we talked about that.
And I don't know if it's went down anymore or not.
Yeah, it has gone down significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he's gonna probe it, and then we'll see where it is, whether we need to...
We're having more backups after that significant rain we had a week ago.
More trees, depending on...
But as the discussion that we had, you know, it's gonna take some time anyway to get rid of that water.
Yeah.
Normally, you know?
And it's just, it's hard to discern, is it this or that, or a combination of the two? Because it certainly is there, and it is in the road ditch, it is in the park, and it's, looks like it's right over the tile. And, you know, they always say that the bigger tile, they don't draw like the little tiles. But they do draw something, so they see the evidence of that. We'll all be tile experts someday, maybe. I don't have anything else.
I'll read that to you. I want to talk to you about the weed situation too.
Which one?
South of Breeden.
We sprayed those, I think.
Half of them.
Yeah. I don't think you want to get too zealous and get the crop. But yeah, that...
Parrot.
I'm glad we do have Weed Man, because I don't know whether they're done yet. They sent them out there with the weed whacker, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't even know what kind of weeds they're selling.
No, those are huge though, aren't they?
They're big.
Wild weed.
Yeah, they're, they look like they're fifteen-foot tall.
It's gotta be those big nettles, the horse nettle, or the giant ragweed.
Giant ragweed, maybe.
Yeah.
Because they're giant, pretty big.
Yeah. I don't even know if it's a noxious weed.
There's gonna be more of those. Have you seen those things? I mean, they're just huge.
Yeah. Any years like this, the water happens, and nettles, they'll just take off. I mean, more than a wildfire in here like this.
Yeah, some of the pretty bean fields are kind of ugly lately.
Yeah, it's just moisture. Get every flush of weeds coming as that moisture keeps feeding it. We'll treat that to the meeting if you're around. It's up to you.
I'm outta here, I think.
All right.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the third and last item on the agenda is the Maneuver Management Annual Updates. We have eight of them today. The first one is for Bill and Dennis Fennami Livestock Farms, Section twenty-five of Wheatland. That one, they've updated their soils. The second one is Stone Path Three for Pete Simons, Section twenty-three of Pleasant Valley Township. That one is an annual update. The third one is for Danny Brooks, Section twenty-seven of Eden Township. This is an original management plan update. The fourth one is for Dave Robinson, Section thirty-five of Eden Township, and that one, there is no changes. The fifth one is for Steve Nace, is in Section fifteen of Washington Township, and that one, there's no changes. The sixth one is Craig Bell, Section fifteen of Sheridan Township, and that one, there is no changes. The seventh one is Bladen, Section seventeen of Union Township, and that one, there is also no changes. The last one is Dennis and Cynthia Abman Fincher, Section seven of Wheatland Township, and that one, there's no changes. Those down, Courtney, so you can file those. And with that, we've got committee reports. Neil?
Okay. Start out with, on Tuesday, and I, we were all there, we had the meeting with the D N R asserting the flood map. So since we're all there, I won't say a lot about it. It's just that anyone who, after this passes, builds a structure and has a mortgage on it, is gonna have to have flood insurance if they're in a flood plain. And we're being provided the maps, so that we can argue any particular locations. Tuesday also had the Foster Grandparent Meeting, went over the end year-end financials. Had some June and July in-service. They also had a D O T presentation that was very good for the foster grandparents. The fiftieth year of foster grandparents, they're having an anniversary celebration at Fort Dodge. And they've had a member resign, and they're always looking for, they're looking for a couple more new foster grandparents. We also had a joint meeting at that time with the R S V P. They're having their joint R S V P foster grandparent golf outing. It's gonna be on August seventh. So if any of you were interested in golfing, there's still a few openings. I know our assessor would like to golf, but he doesn't have a team, so just mentioning that in case someone would like to put together a team, he'd be interested in golfing, I've heard. They helped out with the United Way Barbecue, which on June fourteenth, which went very well, and was a big improvement. It was very well conducted. And on August thirty-first, there's gonna be a compliance visit. They're gonna come and visit R S V P and foster grandparent. And after the end of that day, there'll be a little exit interview as far as how things are going. I hope to people to attend that. I think I previously mentioned the little reed libraries are up. I think there's five of them up. Glidden, Tamleton, Manning, and Ed Carroll, and Liddedale. So that was the foster grandparent R S V P meeting. I just met with the engineer on Friday, going over a few things. As he mentioned, the M sixty-four county line is all done, painted, but it looks real nice. Got back with the group services, and they're gonna be here on August seventeenth at ten thirty a.m. And a good question Mark had last meeting is what can they do for us? And I went back over some of the information, and there is a, one of their slides, there's a new role of voluntary benefits that are not subject to Cadillac tax. So I think that might be something that this company may be interested in selling to us. And I don't know if it's the bait and the hook thing or whatever, but there are some options that people can, employees can have some type of personalized benefits offerings that can hold down the cost insurance. And I'm not sure what the details are on that. That's something we just wanna keep our eyes and ears open for. And that was my week.
Thanks, Neil. Gene?
Tuesday, as Neil said, there's all of that flood thing Tuesday. Thursday and Friday, I was up to Spencer for the Supervised Executive Board's Annual Retreat. And went through our agenda there, and we set up basically some of the topics for this fall's agenda. And these are all subject to, if we can get these speakers lined up, but there's one coming from Maui, Economic Development, from over Hawaii. What impacts state and federal grounds have on counties in regard to the pill and stuff like that, and based on public lands affect us. There's also, Public Health has asked for a joint session, that's gonna be one. And then there's one that they wanna have on secondary road funding, that there's different options on funding and stuff like that. Also, another one is gonna be an update on Senate File two ninety-five about John Marsden. They're gonna try to get him there. This is where that, all that rollbacks and all that, it's gonna be, and see how that's affecting us. There's also, another one is gonna be a stepping up program. It's an ACO program that's to do with keeping people out of jail. Also gonna have another panel discussion on courthouse security. Do we have to have a report filed very yet, very soon? Are you guys, Safety Committee, taking care of that? You know that checklist we had to do?
Well, that was a voluntary checklist, and we've gone over that with the sheriff. And what we've done since then is we've invited the judges and the judiciary to our meetings. They weren't at the last meeting, but they were at the previous one, and they were really happy with how everything is even coordinated with the sheriff's office.
But they're supposed, they were saying, and nobody could answer, but it seems to be a report that's getting filed, filed this fall too on that?
Not sure about that.
Just to balance, you know, see how everybody's doing to kind of follow up.
But that list, and I have it in my safety stuff, was totally voluntary, I know. And we went over it, and a lot of things on that list were more applicable to bigger counties like Polk and...
And I understand, but I just don't think, think I came out of that, I, and nobody could seem to answer the date, but it was supposedly a report, so they could follow up that people are doing something on it, or checking it out.
I'll look into that, Gene, and I will.
And I'm not sure. I thought it was in August, but I might be wrong on that. One of the things we thought we'd do is, what do you do when you have an epidemic? You know, in cases, bird flu and stuff. They're gonna have a topic on that, and then also have Bill Nordy there also too, so. The other things that we went through was...
Gene? I interrupted. You mentioned something on the tax and rollback and all that. There's gonna be another meeting? Is that, that's something I'd be interested in listening in on. Do you have the, more information on that?
No, just that, that's one of the... These are suggested topics for the fall.
We gotta line up the speakers and stuff like that.
Suggested, okay, very good.
This is all subject, getting them all lined up, and then we gotta get some alternatives. And then we did kind of go through some of the other stuff for, some topics for futures meetings to kind of have something to back up on. And then we did go through Bill, the review of Bill Hefkroth's services, and was much improved or satisfied with that. We did give him a raise of two thousand, give him a five hundred dollar... We did give him a raise of two thousand, give him a five hundred dollar for an extended session this last year, and did renew a contract with him. Everybody was real happy with him, and so. We had, there was some issues with communication a year ago, and that was all been resolved. And I think it was a lot to do with the different changes of ISAC. And I think there was a former ISAC employee that kind of kept everything to herself and didn't share too much, and that got to be an issue last time. And I think now that's all, her being gone, that's all resolved, so. And then we went out and toured a fish farm, or shrimp farm.
But that was kind of cool.
Yeah, you know, this guy gets them in, and he says, he gets sixteen thousand. Comes in a bag, gallon bag, as you can't, you can't see, they're so little. There's like, if you look at his lighting, you can see maybe little specks, that's all the bigger there. And then he grows in a nursery, and up to a certain size like that, and then drains off tank. They never change the water on them. They look cloudy on top, but they says it's actually clear underneath. And he sells them there on site and also by farmer's market. There were some people that were buying some at the time.
Gene, a possible topic of discussion, there was nothing about the Des Moines Water Works lawsuit, that there be any?
We talked about that, but we thought, you know, the ones that we probably wanted to be involved in, with being some lawsuit, probably wouldn't wanna say something publicly right now. We thought we might put in like BB and SAC, and if they want a spot, they probably wouldn't wanna comment right now, being the position of lawsuit. We talked about it. That's kind of what Bill
Why not just have the Drainage District Association put it on?
Bill, Bill North is supposed to kind of cover that up, the clean waters and all that, so it's gonna be kind of covered underneath. But we didn't wanna address it to the point that, because we were talking, like, maybe Rick Heck could sometimes should be on the panel. And like I said, they're not gonna say too much right now.
With the lawsuit pending.
It's kind of ironic when there's a problem that needs to be solved, nobody can talk about it because it may affect pending litigation.
Yeah. But that, that was brought up. We had a lengthy discussion on that.
Which is good for the lawyers because it keeps the pending litigation going.
Yeah, commonly referred to as a gag order.
And we went through our financials, and they're, they're in good shape right now, but pending, I don't know how many people show up at our supervisor's statewide meeting, it's gonna depend, depends a lot on our, our financials. They're looking at maybe downline, they may have to raise it twenty-five bucks a year, so. Nothing's done at this point.
The fall meeting's in Cedar Rapids, is it?
Yes. And I don't remember why that is that way, and I think next year's back in Des Moines again, I think. Yeah, it's over Cedar Rapids. It will be, can give you the dates here.
Eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth.
Yeah, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. Of course, I'll, we will have a meeting on the seventeenth, over the start for the spring, so I'll have to go with the night before. Okay, that was my week.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Gene?
While I was at the, the FAMIA meeting with the rest of the supervisors, and then that evening, we had a board of health meeting. We did not have a quorum. So, we rescheduled the meeting for tomorrow night. We had some discussion with, we talked a little bit about it. We had one of, one farmer complained about excessive weeds on the neighbor's property. He was concerned about, they were so big, that if they didn't do something with them, could be an issue with snow in the winter. I mean, they're so huge, you know? I talked to him again on Saturday. The county, they're going and spray, but they sprayed about half the ditch. So, Dave's probably gonna have to take a look at that again and see what we can do there. Pretty big, it's kind of an issue, I guess. And then last week, we had with the water, we did have some issues with a lot of backup water on Drain Seventy again, which we did a repair on. There's some concerns about more roots in, in the tile, so keep monitoring that and see how that turns out. Water can cause a lot of problems. That's my week.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Mark?
Once again, Tuesday, we were all at the firm meeting. Just another comment that it was nice having all of us there. Shows that we're quite involved. And then on Friday was the emergency support meeting. That was my week.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank goodness for those two, I
On Tuesday, Courtney and I, we met with the state auditor and basically kind of an entrance review. And basically just kind of went over if there's any issues that we felt that were of concern at this point. The auditors will be here for the next few weeks, and then the final part of the audit will be done in November. And then after that, we'll have an exit review, and then they'll give us the results of the audit. So, that's kind of where that's at. Courtney, you wanna add anything there? And then also Tuesday was the flood plains meeting down in the basement of the courthouse. It's kind of interesting going through that process. This won't be, this is kind of a comment period right now. If anybody has any concerns as far as being in a flood plain, and Neil alluded earlier, if you do have a building or anything, or any real estate in a flood plain, you'll have to have the flood plain insurance. And that's one of the things that will come out of this. The other thing that, this will not really go into effect, I think they said December of two thousand sixteen is when it all goes into effect. Then it'll go on from that point.
Two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, December of two thousand sixteen. That's the effective date of everything going forward. And then on Wednesday, had a, just went into Region Twelve to sign checks for Region Twelve, so that's all I remember for last week. Courtney, do you have anything?
Nothing to add.
Any other comments or additions?
Was Kemper gonna do a, a drill for a shooter? I remember, emergency management?
I think August sixth.
Are several schools doing that already going to?
I know Kemper was gonna do
Last I knew, it was just Kemper, and then, and then, but they were gonna involve the Manning Hospital.
Okay, I noticed some involvement.
And when is that gonna?
I think August sixth.
So, that's that'd be
Thursday.
Thursday? You sure about that?
I'm not, no, I'm not hungry.
Does that like to see that? I like that.
Uh, I think they're looking for volunteers.
Are they?
I don't know if they're looking at targets or shooters.
I'll check with, I'll check with Sarah after the meeting.
Okay.
We'll be careful, we'll volunteer for her.
But I'm pretty sure it's
I'll be around anyway, but.
If nothing else, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?